...2018 will please come to order and I would ask if the clerk could call the roll.
Calling the roll, Mr. Tuma.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Ms. Conwell. Ms. Conwell is absent at the moment. Mr. Jones, I understand he'll be absent today. Ms. Brown is absent at the moment. Mr. Hauser is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Ms. Baker? Mr. Brady?
Here.
And Chairman Miller?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Has anybody signed in for public comment?
No one has signed in.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're now up to item number four, the main event for this morning, which is the update from Sig Boesens' capable and very helpful consultant on the ERP installation. Please proceed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, today is kind of an interesting day in the sense that I've got a lot of good news. I think that's important. We've got six weeks to go before the end of the year, and I think a lot of things are going to be happening, and it does appear as if they're actually going to be happening, which I think is a good thing. There is a concerning piece, and we'll come to that. So as far as the good news is, you know, I just want to just reemphasize that EAM is rolling along as it has been quite well. You know, the tablets have been put out to the facilities. The facilities folks are using them, and they're getting into with following up, follow-up kind of activities, making sure people are using the system for work orders, and I think that's good news. Core HR and benefits, as you are aware, you know, open enrollment started, closed, excellent response. About 99% of the folks in the county went into the system and used it, and that was very positive. So that's good news, and they're moving forward now with probably the main lasting piece that needs to be in place for benefits, of course, is to make sure that you connect to all the benefit providers, and that's what they refer to as their interfaces. And so those are coming along reasonably well. They're probably three-quarters of the way through the approximate 11 interfaces that they need to finish by the next three weeks or so, two weeks, and they seem to be coming along just well, quite well in that regard. The general ledger activity, which is targeted for basically launching on January the 4th, and then it then becomes the system of record for the county. They're moving quite well along those lines. They're following their schedule. They just last week completed their first stage of their integrated systems testing, and it was successful. So they're now into the second stage, and then they will start user acceptance testing in a couple of weeks. So that's moving along quite well, and they're tracking a lot of the detailed activities as they should. The other piece, I think, that actually started yesterday was talent acquisition. The team conducted a soft launch, so it's opened in a very limited manner, and it'll be used, and people will work with it, and then they will literally broadcast it out to the rest of the county in a couple of weeks. So that's good news as well. So just to show you some of the tracking that the team is doing from the general ledger perspective, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, this is very good work. You can see they were running about 18 tests a day, that 90% of them were successful, and that's very, very good in terms of conducting an integration systems test. So the outlook for the year-end, I think it's relatively good news. It appears that there are no major surprises coming in the next six weeks, and that, you know, DOIT will be able to deliver the remaining components that they are planning to do for HR. It appears that the general ledger and project accounting will not have any major surprises because of the extensive testing that they're doing, so that it will launch on January the 4th. DPM's track record is a little concerning. You know, this was the product that literally had to be reloaded back in midsummer, and there's been some difficulties in getting going on that. There's been some problems in getting resources here. A lot of things have kind of slowed down the DEPM progress, and that is the tool that's providing budget, budget tracking, budget preparation, and it also is the one that provides the reporting capabilities, the ad hoc reporting capabilities referred to as business intelligence. So those tools are in play. There was a thought that they were going to be able to get that done by the end of the year. They've already moved that to a little bit later, mid-January, you know, and, you know, there are some questions about how it's being configured and where they're going to get their data, and that still needs to be resolved. So they're working on that. We'll see how that moves, but it makes it a little difficult for me to say that that will happen. Some disappointing news, I just wanted to highlight these. You know, the team stopped having weekly meetings with the executive steering committee, and when they did that, they stopped generating weekly reports. And so that continues to be the situation where there's not really weekly reporting being prepared by the county team. The INFOR team, as the contract requires, generates a weekly report every week. But by not having a weekly report, that also means that the concept of reporting completions and reporting percent complete is also, also does not appear to be happening. The team has, this is disappointing, when we first started back in the beginning of the year, I think we observed that the team was being managed in a very silo-like approach. We talked about the fact that there should be a single individual project director so we could, in essence, treat the enterprise-wide solution on an enterprise-wide basis and make sure that there is communication among the team and so forth. And, you know, with the loss of the deputy CIO, this, the project has quickly fallen right back into a silo approach to the way it's being managed and guided. Part of that's because the existing acting CIO is just simply overloaded. I mean, there's just way too much for that individual to be doing, and it's pretty hard to put in a full-time on the project, which is what I think that it should happen.
Okay. Councilman Schranz.
Just a question on this page. As we're moving away from doing the weekly reporting that you just alluded to and the loss of the deputy, is this going to make it easier or harder for us to identify the deliverables when we're moving to a fixed rate monthly payment because we are going to not be able to see those deliverables progressing throughout the month?
I address that in my recommendations, and, you know.
Right.
So there's no question that I think that the team needs to track and stay on top of all the deliverables, not only the INFOR ones, which are contractual, but also the county deliverables. And there's constantly been this issue of them not paying attention, the county not paying attention to, in their master plan, what the deliverables are for their piece of the work. So that still needs to be done, but from a contractual perspective, I do recommend that, and I will talk about that, that the county, in essence, the administration, report to you, certainly on a monthly basis, that what the deliverables were, that the, that INFOR has completed, and how does that tie and match into that fixed monthly payment.
Well, because we're on this slide, if we're moving away from weekly reporting from the county side, to be monitoring the INFOR, it just seems as though it's going to have the potential to slip as far as being monitoring of those deliverables as the month goes on, and all of a sudden, we're going to be hit with a flat money, monthly amount that we've agreed to and a fixed deliverable that was supposed to have been monitored throughout the month.
There's no question that a lot of that activity was the activity that was being performed by Jim Hay, the deputy CIO. That's now a vacuum, that's a hole. Somehow needs to be filled. I think the right way to fill that is to have a full-time project director so they can focus on the project, and that would allow the interim CIO to pay attention to the rest of the duties that the CIO needs to pay attention to. And right now, I think that that individual is pretty well overloaded, no matter how much some things get moved off the table to delegate it to someone else.
Ms. Baker, followed by Gallagher.
Right. Yeah, I guess a follow-up to your last couple of statements. Do you see or am I ahead of things in your recommendations that there is a reorganization now occurring and that we are looking to fill that gap and maybe internally with those that are there and familiar with the project and hiring out to take someone's place that perhaps isn't as integral of the project, or?
I don't know where things stand. I don't know, I mean, I think I have second-hand knowledge that there is an expectation that the job would be filled, that there would be a full-time employee brought in to take the deputy CIO role, but I don't know exactly where that stands. I don't, you know, I do know that, again, second-hand kind of comments, there is a perception on most individuals in the Department of Technology that it takes six months to get somebody, and so that, you know, and my reaction, of course, is if it's going to take you six months to get somebody, you really ought to get a consultant in there to take on that role. But I don't know where that stands or if there's even, I have not heard anybody say that that's what they're going to do.
If I may just follow, I know that back when Mr. Rhine, I believe that's, came board, he was, at least to our knowledge, the point person to be the overall, and then now is in the, I believe he's in the payroll and?
He's got the entire, he's basically managing the entire fiscal piece, which includes payroll, and it also includes workforce management. He is overloaded. I have several times suggested that he needs to have some support in order to just do that piece. My understanding is that there is an intern now who is starting to provide some of that support. I have had conversations with the administration about, certainly Jack Rhine has the skill and the talent and the ability to run the entire project.
Right.
But if you remove him from the fiscal piece, then I think there's going to be an issue there unless you can backfill with someone with the exact same talent, skill, and ability and do it quickly.
Right.
You know, so it's a question of robbing Peter to pay Paul, right? If you move him over to the overall project, then you've got to bring in somebody behind him, and that somebody would not have all of the knowledge and detail information that he now has over the fiscal piece.
Right.
It seems like it would be easier to leave him there, focus on making that happen, as I think will, with him there, and then bring somebody in at the project director level, because that person then doesn't have to have all the detailed knowledge of the various applications. He just has to be a really good project manager, project director, I mean, and focus on the pieces and how to bring the project managers together and how to make sure that the communications are established and all that kind of thing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. It's disappointing, but I understand. Thank you.
Councilman Gallagher.
You know, Zig, since you've been here, it just seems to me that you speak to us and no one seems to be listening on the other side, and we've said it, and I'll say it again, I think we needed a project manager from the outside at the beginning to be taking care of this. To hear that people are overloaded at this portion and that nothing's going to be done about it other than an intern, and this is, and by the way, this is how we get information, through you. We hear it from no one else. You know, we're supposed to have a monthly report from the administration. Mr. Chairman, have you received that yet?
The monthly report was expected on the 8th, but we have not received it yet.
Okay.
And we believe it's related to the departure of Jim Hay. He kind of coordinated sending us that report, and it's part of the problem of that transition.
No, I know your concern, Mr. Chairman, is micromanaging this, but I think it's our job to micro oversee this, and lame excuses such as that are lame excuses. If that team is not prepared to lose somebody, either by leaving or by having the flu, where are we at? Is this an excuse to kick it further down the road another month? I'm not going to vote for any more money. I'm not going to vote for any more time, and I made that pretty clear. But the more I hear, Zig, from you is, is that we have issues here with the management of this at this point in time. It's unacceptable. Is someone from INFOR here finally? What I'm going to request, and the chairman can officially do it or not, but you should be here at every one of these meetings, be it the administration or our meeting with Sig, and be prepared to give us a bit of an update, because quite honestly, sir, we've been in this, I don't know how long, I don't even know who you are. I asked my team, are they here? And my team said, and I'm not blaming you, my team said, I think that's from, that guy's from INFOR. Why does our team think the guy from INFOR is here? We should intimately know you, and I want to get to know you, because I think you might have some thoughts about this that may, may line up with mine or may line up with the administration. I don't know if you guys are feeling pressure.
Could you please come forward and? We're happy that you're here. We'd like to have you introduce yourself, and yes, we would like to request that INFOR be present at the future meetings that we have, and we appreciate very much the work that you're doing. We know it's complex, and we know it's difficult, and we think we're making progress, but we also have some challenges. Please introduce yourself.
Councilmen and women, I am John Sanguenetti. I'm a senior project director with INFOR. I am the designated project director for this project here at Cuyahoga County.
How do you spell your last name?
It's S-A-N-G.
S-A.
N-G.
N-G.
U-I. N-E-T-T-I.
That's a mouthful.
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have received your request to be in attendance, and we will do everything we can to accommodate that.
Thank you very much.
And as, in addition to your request, in the future and today, I have come prepared to, you know, answer questions that you may have, you know, if, you know, depending upon the nature of the questions and the detail that you may require.
Could you leave your contact information with the clerk so that we can make sure that you're aware of all the future meetings?
You go ahead and do so.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sanguenet? It's Sanguenet?
Sanguenetti.
Sanguenet? Sanguenet?
Sanguenetti.
Sanguenetti. If at any time, and all we've, all we've ever asked up here is if there's a problem. We just want to know about it. We hear problems sometimes through Sig, sometimes through the plane dealer, sometimes through word of mouth, sometimes from the guy at the door. If there's anything that you have a concern with, we would like to know about it. You work for us, too, and we write the check, so we just want to know, and I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you, if there's something amiss, something awry, please let us know.
That has been occurring. It may not be coming directly to you, but we report daily to the IT department, the ERP project team, so, you know, there's no concern or aspect from my perspective as it relates to us not responsibly letting the county know what the issues are and what the problems are, and of course assisting and trying to resolve those as effectively as we can.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman?
Yeah, Mr. Sanguenetti, only because you, we were at the microphone, and we, I will echo, I think, everybody up here, thank you for, we appreciate you being here. Leadership is critical to any project, as I'm sure you know of this nature. And I'll ask you a tough question. If the deputy of an organization that's running a $25 million project leaves, that's probably an important piece of information. Were you informed as to the reason he left, what happened in the background of the deputy leaving?
After he resigned, I was informed that he was leaving. I don't know the details behind it. We responded, you know, effectively as it related to assisting the IT department in dealing with that, the impact of that.
Body was asked to move, to pay you folks additional funds. We approved that on Tuesday, and on Thursday, that man resigned. That kind of notice, I think you should have been well aware of as the other side of the equation, and I hope you were.
We were not informed in advance.
That's what I was afraid of.
You know, of that occurring.
I wouldn't put a fault on you. I was merely saying that if you really have a partnership, both halves of the partnership, hey, I'm leaving, I'm going to go this, another opportunity, whatever, whatever the reasons are, you should be fully aware of that piece of information, because you're depending on our team to be the other half of the field. If we're the offense and you're the defense or whatever, just by that football analogy, both of them have to be successful in order for this game to win.
We agree.
Councilman Tuma.
Thank you. And while we have you up here, I hate to put you on the spot, but you're here, so. So who do you report to directly?
Within the county, I report to Mike Young.
I'm sorry, to?
Mike Young.
Mike Young, okay. And how long have you been on the job in your position here then for this project then?
I have been assigned to this project since last October.
So since last October, this is the first time that we have you up before the?
Well, I've been present and/or viewing the live stream of these meetings on a continuous basis.
Okay, but this is the first opportunity we've had to question you, speak directly?
It's the first, it's the first time I have been invited.
See, and that, I think, getting to the heart of my colleagues' concerns, again, it's just about communication. It's just about, you know, it seems here that council is constantly having to, you know, drag information out of the administration when this should be something that should be an open process and, like Councilman Schranz said, there's a lot of money here that's being provided for this project, and taxpayers probably want to know what the heck is going on with this project since it's been dragging on for so long, and you clearly see there's frustration on our part because we're not getting information. And I would just ask moving forward that, you know, if it's you or somebody else, you know, we need to have better communication, even if it's a simple email saying, hey, this is, this is an update, or here's something that you might want to know, like Mr. Schranz said, you know, so I would just ask from your position, and I'm not, I'm not saying you're at fault or you're blamed, but you just happen to be in this position, and this is your role, your job, and I'm asking for better communication on your part if there's somebody within the administration that you deal with, you, you know, let them know that, you know, this is where we stand on this, is we, we have to have better communication moving forward. Because, again, I know Sig tells us, hey, I make this recommendation, I explain this, this is what they need, and it's always like we're at these meetings and it's just, well, they didn't do it, or they, for whatever reason, they chose not to do it. Maybe there's a legitimate reason why something isn't occurring within the administration or within one of the departments. We'd like to know that, and if you can relay that information, that'd be great.
I understand your question and position. I assure you that we have effective and continuous communication with the Cuyahoga ERP project team, particularly the management of that, and I believe Sig is in a position to confirm that we are daily actively communicating and interacting, you know, on all the issues and status and progress of the project.
Right, and this doesn't have to be a one-sided, hey, you know, it's the administration and it's the council, and, you know, we can't, you know, move this thing forward to the guy. I'd like to see this thing move forward together and get it done and get it done under, you know, on budget, well, within budget with what we have now, and within a reasonable timeframe, because, you know, in the long run, sure, it's, it's a great project and can save a lot of money for the county, but, you know, if we keep extending and delaying and having these potential issues that Sig brings up every, every month, there's like, things are moving along, but, and I want to get through a month where we say, hey, things are moving along, and we see an end date in this whole project. I understand. That's where I'm at.
Ms. Baker?
You know, I don't want to leave this without, I think, being a very concerning piece of this, and we can have people come and go, and we can even have some leadership come and go, which I think is highly unlikely that you would have someone as integral as our deputy was, but to leave with no notice, to leave with a one-letter, one-line explanation and not have any kind of transition so that he feels responsible, the next person can take over, that seems highly unlikely and very concerning that someone of that caliber would just one day say, and Sig, with you watching as closely as you have over these last several months, not to have any indication that that man was having problems that would lead him to a one-line, I'm leaving, I don't really care about what happens behind me. That just, something is amiss here that we haven't really talked about, and the answer back with, I don't know why he left, and I don't know the circumstances, just seems odd to me not to have any idea why a man that is, was a leader and worked hours and hours and hours on this project and had people under him he was helping and answering to would just go up and leave. And that, I hope, isn't an indication of things that we may be surprised by later, that there might be others that may follow for reasons that we don't know why right now. I just don't want to leave this conversation, he left, it happens, it doesn't happen. That is unusual. That is not something that we should just accept. He didn't leave a two-week notice, he didn't have a successor, we were completely surprised. That doesn't just happen. This is a huge project that's on his career, on his resume, that he has to now show that he left, and I just think that we need to make sure that we process that and that hopefully we watch to see if there's any other dominoes that might fall in the leadership role, that why it is this happened. I don't like the answer, we just don't know.
Councilwoman Baker, Mr. Hay's departure, from my perspective, is not indicative of any issue with the execution and the potential success or the potential completion of this project. It was, I believe, an independent situation between Jim and the county.
Well, if I just, you know, as Sig has already reported, it leaves our other leaders overwhelmed with the work. It leaves reporting not reported because there's not time to do it. It leaves questions unanswered. We are on a good, good path right now, but of course it has to impact how this project is continuing, and we do have to answer, how are we going to replace the person that has left that was, he certainly did something while he was there, someone is taking over his responsibilities, and we are at a point now where we can't afford another hit like that. So I can't, I, you know, I'm, I hear what you're saying, I hope you're right, but I do believe that to lose a principal person like that has to be impactful and has to slow down this process in some way unless we really take some very aggressive moves to get back on track.
And again, I can assure you that the collective team is working to deal with the impact of Jim's departure.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
I have a question. Zig, are you in direct contact with Mr. Sanguenetti?
Yes, I am. We speak about every other week.
Well, I would like if you would expand that contact and stay in close touch with Mr. Sanguenetti and if he has any, any important information for us to be the channel for us. I don't think, I don't think it's reasonable to expect Mr. Sanguenetti to be reporting both to the administration and to the council. His, his contact is the administration, but Sig is our channel into this process, so I would appreciate if you would work that channel and keep us informed.
Can do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The other thing that came up and is important, the lateness of the monthly report is not Could someone from the administration let us know when we? Could someone from the administration let us know when we can expect to receive the monthly report? Who do we have, who do we have representing the administration? Okay.
Good morning, Councilmen, Councilwomen. My name is Kiran Vasudev. You should have the report this afternoon. Due to the holidays earlier this week, we were done with a review early this week, and we should have that sent to you fairly quickly.
Okay, and would you also please send, send the message back that we, we know about the holiday, and we know about the transition with, with Mr. Hay, but, but in, in the future, we do expect these reports to be coming in on time. I think it kind of sends a signal that something's not right when the report doesn't come in on time. So we would request your close attention to that.
Absolutely.
And, and we do know to be positive that, that this is, this is the first month that this has been a problem, they have come in on time in the past, and we appreciate that.
Will do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Who is this gentleman?
Could you introduce yourself again, please?
Sure, my name is Kiran Vasudev. I'm the program manager for the ERP implementation.
So you're with IT?
That's correct.
And not the administration?
Yes, I'm with IT, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, please proceed.
Okay, I think we can go to the next, go to the next page, because the points on here have been discussed. Let's talk a little bit about project condition. I just wanted to repeat for you, this is the chart that in the beginning of October was presented and represented the, the reschedule, the replan, and gave you the, the picture for the next year. So, and then I added some things at the bottom, because the picture for the next year was provided by, by Jack Ryan, and so it didn't have the HR components. So I put the HR components on here, so you can see the fact that they are there. And now, because of the particular structure, I mean, I had to sit there and show the HR components underneath the January 1 date, but really, they're all basically going to happen in December, which is as planned, and that's the good thing. So that's what that arrow means down there. I did add something at the very bottom, which is, which is a new piece. It has risen, if you will, and that's the DOIT has moved forward with establishing or trying to get a data repository for all of the ERP archival information, and that's been in the plan. But they're referring to that as, as a data lake, and my understanding is that a vendor has been selected and so forth. So, so that's basically there. There's an arrow there, because that's going to go on for quite a while. It's, it's basically a subscription approach, which means that you'll be paying for this every year, a certain amount of money, who knows how long, okay? And, you know, it is intended to be for all documentation, all unstructured data, you know, all archival data and so forth throughout the county. Okay, and I've noticed that I'm calling it a new complication. I mean, it does add a complication, it is, it is activity that needs to be taking place, and it will be in essence, parallel to what happened. I lost, oh, it's up there, okay. Yeah, it just broke.
We have copies here, and we have probably enough that you can distribute it.
I'll be back. Okay, so, so I repeated this from last month, which was talking about the progress of, over the last 20 months, but, you know, I, I think it's important to recognize that there are still some pieces that are hanging out there, and we just need to remember those, and we need to make sure that we take care of those. And that's all I was trying to do, was to highlight the fact that there are some pieces sitting out there. For, for public works, I mean, we have this whole issue of, we have to connect the EAM piece, the public works piece, to the rest of the system, which will happen later in 20, in 2019. The human resources piece, we talked about earlier, we need to have those interfaces, otherwise we don't have a complete solution for benefits, I mean, so. And then for talent acquisition, I think I mentioned to you, yes, it's been launched. Got to remember that we've got to turn this thing on for the rest of the county. So those are the, hanging out there. The, the team then took a look at...
On that last point.
Excuse me?
Could you describe the talent acquisition piece a little bit, and, and what the impact is of, of having only a soft launch at this time?
I think it's just a matter of the number of people that are involved, because talent acquisition is all about putting out job postings, and then connecting to your, the, the website where people can actually apply to, for positions. And so that's, that's what it's all about, and right now, they're just keeping it in a very small controlled group, until they bring it out, and say, okay, now we can have others throughout the county put in their various job postings. That's basically what, what's happening.
Okay.
Okay? The, the finance team took a closer look at the rollout, and this is just to show you that they have, that they have structured what activities need to take place, they've laid them out by week, they're staying, and they're, they're meeting these, these timelines, which is a good thing. Now, I was a little concerned when I, when I first got a copy of this, because at the very bottom there, you see business intelligence, and you don't see anything in color out there. That's been updated, and so now, there is, there is a date out there for business intelligence and some activity, and that, that's all out in January. So, so that's been, that's been adjusted, which was, which was a good thing, because I was nervous that that had fallen off the, the track. So, but there have been some immediate schedule shifts from that October 1 positioning. All of a sudden, you know, DEPM is a few weeks later, business intelligence is a few weeks later. You know, I, at first, I was a little nervous when I looked at that detailed spreadsheet, let me go back, this one right here. This particular spreadsheet didn't list project accounting, yet if you go and look at this chart, which is the one you originally got in, in October, you'll, it includes project accounting. It literally lays it out and identifies it as being a major component, as it should. When we got to the spreadsheet document, it disappeared. I have since been able to determine that, yes, it's included, but it didn't match what had been presented in October. So that was the reason for my concern. So, you know, as I said to you, we, we've been replanning this project quite a bit. So I, you know, I just want to highlight for you, and summarize for you, that, you know, in essence, six weeks ago, the project went into, into this formal major replan, which you saw. The project, the project managers, however, have been struggling to, and this is their word, to synchronize the top-level plan with the detailed project plan. Okay, and that's been going on for six weeks. I keep asking for copies of it, and I don't get it. So now, I received the HR detail plan last night. I am supposed to receive the financial updated plan by the end of the week. But still, I mean, it just means there's a lot of activity going on, because people are coming up with these high-level target dates, and then it doesn't match the detail. Okay, so that's what they've been struggling with, to try to get that taken care of. You'll notice that, here's where I mentioned the intern that's been added to help Jack. I think that's what that person's doing, is working on the detailed plan. So, so the other thing that does not appear to be happening, and this takes us back to this business of no weekly reporting, is that the completions, the percent complete on a weekly basis is not being posted to the plan, for whatever reason. But the point is, is they're not being done, or I certainly am not seeing them, I certainly am not getting evidence that, that that is happening. Okay? I want to remind us of...
ZIG, Councilman Gallagher.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. But the weekly reports are done, you're just not seeing them.
There is no weekly report prepared by the county, to the best of my knowledge, because, because I keep asking for it, and there isn't, to my, to my knowledge, there isn't one, because once that ESC meeting stopped occurring weekly, there was no impetus for preparing a report.
Do you suspect that there is one?
I suspect that they talk weekly to the chiefs at a meeting that I don't get to attend.
Dale, could we bring the gentleman back up?
Yes.
Sir? No, no, the, the county. You, you've done your due diligence. You're the only one here, so.
Sure, I can, I can represent the PMO.
Are there weekly reports?
So there are several weekly reports. Each of the, we have broken this down into work streams, like the fiscal, payroll, HR. So all those work streams have very detailed reports, and ZIG, I believe you're copying on this email, that show, you know, how the task are tracked. We do have a monthly report, that's part that the ESC receives. The project management office is, you know, all the executives who are in charge, the steering team members, and we have like a working agenda that we go through to remove project issues. And the weekly report that INFOR team prepares is a combined report, it's a collaborative effort that, that, ZIG, I believe you get a copy of that, yeah.
Would it be possible, Ms. Chair, if we could make sure that ZIG gets those reports? We don't need to see them, we're laypeople up here, but it would be important, I think, for ZIG to see them, to just give us a sense of assuredness.
Absolutely, if, if it's not already happening, we'll make sure it happens, yeah.
Thank you. Is there, is, to Kiran, is there, you said that you have, have weekly reports for each of the various work streams. Is there a weekly report that, that pulls this all together and describes the weekly status of the entire project?
It is combined in the INFOR weekly report, that, you know, the INFOR project team gets information from the consultants, and contributions from, you know, folks like Jack and me, and the other project team leads.
So the INFOR weekly report serves both as the INFOR report and the IT report on the overall project status?
We, we contribute to that, yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's primarily driven by INFOR, but we, all of us check, check it, make sure we're in agreement.
Councilman Schran.
I guess I believe in clarity. ZIG indicated the county was producing its version of a weekly report up to this point, and INFOR was producing its weekly version, which, of course, we would contribute to help. He indicated that we are no longer doing the county side of that. You kind of left it as though, I wasn't sure I understood, so I'm asking for clarity. Did the county produce weekly reports that were monitoring functions and activities, and are they no longer doing that?
We're no longer doing the executive steering team weekly report, but we've taken the INFOR report, and that is a collaborative effort. And for the project teams, like the core HR, the fiscal and payroll, they create weekly, you know, agendas and progress to show tracking of activities.
Then it sounded like that was a no, you're no longer doing a county weekly report that you were doing before.
Just by the county, that's correct, we're not doing that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll move on?
Move on.
This was where we stopped, you know, last, last month, I had, I had kind of restated that overall project plan for, for purposes of trying to see what it looked like on a calendar. And what I was getting at is that it makes an awful lot of sense, since we have discussed several times, that the, the enterprise-wide system is not enterprise-wide, okay? I mean, so I think we've all agreed to that, and that some fairly large components of the county overall, from an enterprise perspective, are not really planned on being part of, or they're not represented in this enterprise-wide solution. And so it made some sense, you know, if you've got some money available in that $25 million, and you've got some time available, which theoretically you might have at the end of 2019, that you could roll out the fiscal pieces to HHS and to the courts. And that's what I was trying to show there. So one of my recommendations will be that I, I think you should ask DOIT to develop a business case, and to answer why they can't do that, or can.
You said roll out the fiscal piece to...
HHS.
HHS and the courts.
And to the courts. Now, I don't know enough yet about the court's willingness, because I, I have not had an opportunity to talk to them. I have spoken to HHS, they're perfectly happy to have that happen.
Okay, fine, thank you.
This is the same chart that I, I've shown you, I showed you a month ago, and the reason it's the same is that I don't have a copy of the, of the budget analysis spreadsheet as of the end of October, so I don't have October actuals to put in here, okay? And I also, you know, don't have the projection of the fixed fee. I've got the change order, but I don't have the budget analysis spreadsheet, which literally reflects the changes represented by the, the fixed fee monthly billings from INFOR. So soon as I get those, I'll be able to, in essence, update this. I do think it's kind of interesting to, to show you, this is, again, the same, same document that I showed you last month, because I don't have the updates. But I, I do think that there's some reason why we have those bumps in that line. As you can see, I've got the arrow there, which is to remind ourselves that we now have this new piece, which is the data lake piece, and that's probably where, where the spend will take place. It'll probably be in two pieces, the first will be for the actual product and the installation, and then the next one will be for the implementation services, which is consulting services. And those, those two combined represent about $800,000. I'm repeating this just to show you, this was the recommended, you know, payback model that, you know, has been discussed for quite a while now, and I'm just indicating that there's really been no, no movement on generating something like that. Of course, we might be surprised, and in this, this particular month's report, it might be there. I don't know. Like to talk a little bit about assurance, you know, internal audit has been involved with the project, as they should, and that was something that we, we discussed months ago, and it's, it's been very effective. They've been doing their job, I mean, they've been literally focusing in on controls and, and security as, as they should, and have been, you know, so they've been invited to almost all the work stream meetings, which means that they've been sitting in and being aware of what's going on, that, that they have been involved with the integrated systems testing for general ledger and project accounting, and were able to successfully conduct their control and security-oriented tests, which is exactly, exactly what should happen. Unfortunately, they're still waiting to conduct their control, to complete their control and security testing for the HR piece. So that's, that's been a struggle for two months. And then there are some, there are some findings that they have published, they really have not gotten formal responses as they are supposed to. Whenever you have an internal audit finding, then the administration is supposed to give them formal responses, they haven't really gotten those. And probably the biggest one, the biggest one is the fact that not only the, the, the internal audit people comment on this, and it's a finding, but so has the state auditor for quite a while, and that's the fact that the county does not have a disaster recovery plan for, for DOIT. There's just been no movement on that. And we're talking about years here. There was an oddity that came up in the executive steering committee, and I just wanted to highlight that for you, this, these are, this is a page taken from the executive steering committee meeting yesterday, and all I'm, all I did here is just highlight the statements that were of interest in red. What has happened is, you know, we've got a third-party assurance consulting organization, you know, they've been doing their job, and they're working directly with the DOIT organization as they, as they should. But what has happened is, within the last month, their scope has shifted, and so they are reporting on this. as they should. But what has happened is, within the last month, their scope has shifted. And so they are reporting on this shift in scope. And what this shift has done is that they are not doing the readiness assessment for general ledger and for DEPM, which are the near-term things going on, and they're focusing on the ones that are further out. So the portions of the fiscal system that are going to be in June are the ones that this is basically saying they're shifting to. And I just found that interesting, that the ones that's happening right away is the ones that is not going to get their, the value of their assessment. Okay? So it's not a reduction in scope, it's a shift. It's a changing of, they weren't going to do the other pieces, now they are, type of thing. So the outlook for near term, you know, I'm just kind of repeating this. We started out making that, and I guess I'm suggesting to you that it's relatively smooth sailing for the next six weeks. I think things are in fairly good shape. So with HR benefits, as long as those interfaces get completed, and I've just tried to show you some pictures here, you know, some of the logos and some of the companies, just to talk about, you know, the kinds of things that need to be completed and that need to be tested over the next couple of weeks, and I think that's going to come along just fine. This page is basically a screen print of the job application screen. I mean, it's just to kind of give you something to say, yep, talent acquisition, you know, looks like it's going to roll out in a couple of weeks, and it will be supportive of that particular screen. HRSD, HR Services Delivery, that's what those letters mean. There are multiple components to this thing, but two of them are knowledge base and what is referred to as HR case management are probably going to go just fine, and they'll be in by the end of the year. Knowledge base is their terminology to describe a data repository for all of the HR-related documentation, policies, procedures, and so forth. That's what that is. And that's pretty well already populated. It's pretty well in shape. It just simply hasn't been turned on to the rest of the county. Case management, they're working on that right now. This is actually, you know, kind of like a customer service place for HR. So when folks have questions and comments, and they want to call the HR department, and they want to talk to them about HR-related matters, then the HR department can, in essence, establish a case of communication, and it's all going to be their communications with that particular employee. That's being configured right now as we speak. Learning Management System, you know, I just went to the website and said, okay, here's all the things that Learning Management System can do for you. I mean, it's fairly, but it's fairly a long list, but in essence, it's a training database. It's where you can put all your training material. It's where you can do your scheduling of your training classes. It's where you can register your students and all that kind of thing. N4 uses this internally. You know, the statement that I put up here, the overlay, is relatively easy launch, minimal configuration, no conversions required, mainly training. All that has to be done is people have to be trained on how to use it. So this is scheduled to go up before the end of the year as well. I think it's going to be a slam dunk. You know, it's going to be pretty easy. You know, and you're going to take your time as you go into 2019, as you start training people how to use it. I mean, it's going to be fairly fine. Yes, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The LMS is the engine. Is the content all robust and solid that is being drawn down? Is that all data? Is all the content for the LMS there?
You mean, like, when you say content, you're saying a training class?
Yeah, yeah.
No, absolutely not.
Oh!
No, no, no.
Well, the LMS is-
It's just the engine.
It's an empty shell, then.
Yeah, you got to train people how to do it, and then they're going to start doing it. Yeah.
Yeah, but if nobody has written the classes and the content, this is just a bucket without any water in it.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
That's why it's easy. Yeah, well, that's why it's also meaningful.
Until you have content. Content is king, not training.
Okay, while we have a short break, I'll mention that Councilwoman Brown has joined the meeting. Thank you. And please proceed.
So I can tell, okay. So the general ledger and project accounting, I think, you know, the smoothness of this initial cycle, getting things complete for the IST, you know, going back in some of the history we've had and the difficulties with other ISTs, I mean, this is good news. I mean, to me, it's a harbinger of things to come, that it'll be fairly smooth, and, you know, you'll be able to get that thing up and running in January, because there's just two more testing cycles to go. UAT is probably going to start in a couple of weeks, so I think everything will be fine. There is a connection between general ledger and DEPM, which is an important one, and that's this whole business of budget versus actual. I mean, so there needs to be that connection, and that will not be tested until DEPM is done. And so we may not see that particular piece until mid-January, unless it gets delayed a little bit longer, but that, so that won't happen on January the 4th. I mean, general ledger will go, but it probably won't be connected to DEPM. So budgeting startup, I mean, you know, right now, the design is being finalized, it's being configured, you know, but quite frankly, you know, I'm a skeptic because of some of the problems that DEPM had earlier in the year. And so there may still be some surprises. Okay? May still be some surprises, particularly, you know, in the way the structure of the chart of accounts is. That's being resolved, that's being discussed. They're trying to tie that down, because there's some potential confusion of how things are actually being structured and summarized in the general ledger, and then how that's going to relate to things that need to be summarized on the budgeting side, on the budget side. So that's an example of something that could be a surprise. It could be an issue. And if it is, you know, then this thing could drag out a little bit longer. Okay? Business intelligence, and bringing that up is a separate item, but we need to remember it's a tool that's part of the DEPM cluster, a grouping of tools from N4. I mean, that's in essence, your ad hoc reporting mechanism. You know, it could also be a structured report. I mean, you can certainly save your queries and so forth. But it does require that the Office of Budget and Management be trained, because they're the ones that are going to have to literally do this in DEPM, is to generate the reports from a budgeting perspective. Okay? And so they're the ones, they're going to be the owners, they're the ones that have to, in essence, ultimately, as you go down the road, the data, the block of data that's being configured and defined by N4 as we speak, is what's going to have to be maintained by OBM as we go forward. And that's going to be the foundation of what you report against. Okay? So the outlook for 2019, you know, I can't say it's smooth sailing. I think that there's probably, there are some potential things. We got a fence there to keep us from going over the cliff, but, you know, we can't say it's smooth sailing at this point in time. So, you know, last month, I, you know, I kind of went through all of these things in a little more detail, but, you know, this is a summary that basically says, okay, we got to be wary of all these things that are cropping up, and probably, you know, the one that I should have put in here that's not in here, we certainly need to be wary of leadership turnover. We need to solve that, you know? I mean, to me, that seems fairly obvious, but hopefully, everybody will pay attention to that and will take action and will get themselves a full-time project director of this project, because we aren't done yet, right? And we still have 10 months, 11 months, whatever the case may be. And we sure don't want to go through another reschedule, and we don't want to go through all that again, nor do we want to go through any kind of budget increases.
Well, the sense I'm getting from what you're saying is that we have this, this six weeks or so between now and the end of the year, where things seem to be teed up pretty well, and our long-term success involves doing that right, and at the same time, dealing with some of these other issues, like the leadership transition and the reporting process, that could untrack the project longer term if we don't deal with them during this time of relative calm that we have now. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely. Yeah. So let me kind of recap then, some of these things that I've listed on here. Certainly, we need to be wary of leadership change. We need to be very wary of the fact that there's very little money left. Okay? We talked about, you got to be all in. I mean, we need, you know, and I think there's, there seems to be a lot of county dedication right now. Okay? But that's because of what's going on. You know, the thing I would be very nervous about is, all of a sudden, those things happen, the general ledger goes in, and everybody's going to relax. And if they relax, that's going to be exactly when we're trying to do integrated system testing for workforce management and payroll, which is a huge exposure item, the huge risk that I think the county is facing. And if you relax there, it's going to get into trouble. It's going to get into trouble. So we need to avoid, you know, the complete testing at touchpoints. So we need to be wary if we all of a sudden don't do that. The example here is the one I think I might have mentioned before in a prior client situation, where they did parallel on payroll. And the intent was to say, okay, we're going to generate checks that match a person's checks from last pay period. Okay, that made sense. Nothing wrong with that. But a couple of things didn't happen. They didn't test the touchpoint, the interface, with the time clocks. So all they did was feed data from the old payroll system into the new payroll system, and say, hell, look, see, checks are where we expected them to be. But the new time clocks had a different rounding rule. When they ran the time clocks and they went live, and all of a sudden, the checks were wrong. Why? Because the time was wrong, not wrong, different. The time was different, because of the rounding rules. And the union members were not happy. But it was too late. I mean, so they didn't test it. Need to test it. I call it womb to tomb. I mean, from beginning to end, that's got to be done. You're putting in new clocks, you're also changing the account codes, the chart of accounts. You've got, what did we hear from Jack? 1,300 different work rule combinations need to be tested? Any one of which can create a situation where the check comes out different from what that employee expected. The other thing that needs to happen is that they need to be paying attention to known differences. If you know something is different, then simply explain it and talk about it, communicate it. Changing that chart of accounts is going to create a difference in the way things are reported. It's going to happen. Changing the clocks will change the way time is reported. It will happen. It's almost impossible to be perfectly the same, especially if the way it was before might have been inaccurate. So we need to talk.
Councilman Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Was the HR director actively involved in these rounding rules, as far as what this means? Because this is a big, big deal. I know you only took two or three sentences to discuss that, but are we rounding to five minutes up, five minutes back, 10 minutes up, 10 minutes back? This county just went through, is that? The issue that we talked about, with the overtime payment, was it? I can't remember if that was, okay, all right, all right. I'm not allowed to discuss that. But the issue of that five minutes or 10 minutes, if it wasn't what was established in the documents with all those union contracts, this could be a horrendous amount of overtime unpaid or overpaid, either way, because of lunchtime, because of timing rules, because of beginning of the day, end of the day. This is a big wage and hour issue.
I honestly have, you remember, I was talking to you about an example of a prior client situation. I have no idea if there are changes in the way that the time clocks and the way that system's being put in. I do not know.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying that we have an issue on this one.
I'm not suggesting that's the case at all.
Oh, okay. I thought you were alluding that this was not tested.
No, no, I'm giving you an example of why you need to test from beginning to end. And hopefully, the team will do that. I mean, certainly, the way that, you know, one of the reasons why this whole thing got rescheduled is because of the tremendous amount of effort that needs to go into testing workforce management, which is those 1,300 variations and so forth. So hopefully, that's happening. I'm just saying, we got to be wary of that kind of stuff. Okay? We need to be paying attention to that as we go forward. And so on, right on down the line, we talked last month about, you know, you're now getting into the mode of the ultimate validation that's going to happen as you put some of these systems out there. All of a sudden, there's going to be a lot more people that are looking at it. Okay? It's one thing to talk about a department, I'm doing this for the department, and there are 30 people in this department. It's quite another to say, well, I'm putting receiving out there, I'm putting purchase requisitions out there, and now all of a sudden, I've got a lot of people. I'm putting expense reports out there. Now all of a sudden, that's not just the payroll department. Now it's the people who are actually filling that stuff out. You see what I'm saying? So all of that's going to happen. I mean, general ledger is going to be pretty easy, because you're focusing on just the accounting staff, right? It's not a big deal. You're right. But as soon as I get accounts payable, oh, invoices have to be approved by somebody out there, whoever did the receipt of the services. Yeah, that's exactly what's going to be happening in 2019. And that creates an awful lot more pressure and awful lot more importance behind making sure that your user testing works well and you do everything. Does that make sense? We need to know that we've got dual entry going on. We've talked about that, but there's exposure when you have dual entry. People need to pay attention to that. You can't just be lackadaisical about that. N4 has been requesting for a long time that we finalize our design. Well, we need to do that. Okay? You can't keep trying to hit a moving target. Now, unfortunately, if you think about it, you say, 2019, this is when we're going to put these systems in. When did you first do the requirements? 2014? That's five years. A lot of change, which is what people are trying to keep up with. That's unfortunate. But you got to call a spade a spade. I mean, the county has to sit there and say, fine, that's it. Go develop, go do, you know, we'll do the little things, but boy, we're not going to do any more big ones. No more changes. We got to get there.
Yes. First question of the day from Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman Miller. I guess my question relative to, from 2014 to the implementation of 2019, clearly, there've been some technological advances. Technology changes fast. Has that been a part of the revision, or has it been strictly our internal changes, I guess?
To the best of my knowledge, most of it is process changes and procedures and policies and those kinds of things. I mean, in that time period, you've had changes to the union contracts, you know? I mean, those kinds of things do occur. There has been technological change, but I think the entire team, and we even talked about this about almost a year ago, maybe eight months ago. So there's no question, there's some technological changes, but the decision was made to not go there. In other words, don't change horses in midstream. So we're going with the current level of technology from N4, okay? Recognizing, I think we've talked about this, that there's going to be upgrades. Okay? There's going to be upgrades. Couple of them are going to be pretty significant, you know? So pretty sure that DOIT is going to come to you a year and a half, two years from now, round numbers, and ask for, you know, a seven-digit number. Okay? Because the N4 technology is changing, it is being upgraded, and it's an improvement, no question about it. But everybody basically said, let's ride this horse and let's get across this stream.
I guess my final question would be, is the current, when we say current, we're talking 2018, I guess, relative to, you know, you think about our cell phones and the upgrades that they've gone through in the last five years, and how much they've changed from 2014 to 2019. So I guess I want to make sure we're not working from- So, I guess I wanna make sure we're not working from, if we put it in cellphone terms, in iPhone 5 when the iPhone X is out. You know what I mean? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, I don't think you're, I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna be experiencing N4's technology changes that are leaps. I think you're going to be, you're going to be experiencing steps. Does that help? I mean, it's, it's not gonna be a leap. It's not, it's not gonna be, let's go, you know, using old, old IT terms. It's not gonna be going from green screen to colored screen. I mean, which was a leap. All right?
Okay, we welcome Ms. Conwell to the meeting and please proceed.
The last item to be wary of is this, the fuzziness, the current fuzziness of the implementation staffing versus the, the production staff. Okay? So, we've, we've got things that are in production and it's, to me, it's not clear exactly how and who are doing things from a production perspective versus the implementation team perspective. An example of that, of course, is the, is the work, work, work order system is in production. And in fact, you know, yesterday at the executive steering committee, I heard a comment that we're, we're gonna not report on the workforce, the work order management portion anymore, you know, which would imply that there's nothing much going on from a project implementation perspective. So, so how do we, how do we kind of get some assurance regarding this outlook? You know, I, there's no question, I think we need to establish and maintain a comprehensive task plan that addresses all the crucial activities, including task accountability and achievable target dates, which is what, we talked earlier about the fact that the team has used the term, we're trying to synchronize all of our plans to the master task, task plan. Okay? That we need to be updating the comprehensive task plan at least weekly with completions. And I struggle with whether or not that's happening, because I'm not getting copies of the task plan and I'm not seeing weekly updates to percent complete. And certainly, I think that they, the team should be tracking progress weekly. I understand comments about, are there weekly meetings? Yes. You know, are they, are they with the team? Yes. Are they always with other members of other teams? Not always. Sometimes, yes. Is anybody pulling it all together and looking at it overall? That's the weekly piece that's missing.
So, Zig, do you feel that the Department of IT should have its, its own comprehensive weekly status report as, as opposed to what they said that it's kind of blended into the N4 report?
Absolutely.
Okay. A clear statement. We appreciate that. Thank you.
So, some recommendations. Back to your comment, Councilman Schron. Need to link the deliverables on a monthly basis. Okay? So, council should expect a definitive listing of the N4 deliverables that have been completed, which includes review and approval. If you don't approve them, it's not complete. And there's been a history of, of N4 completing things and then having, having to wait forever to get the approval. Okay? So, it needs to be approved and, and that needs to be in support of the monthly N4 billing. So, if the billing is for a million dollars, there's a million dollars' worth of deliverables. Or 993,000, whatever the case may be.
And along this line, Zig, what was the target completion date for that audit that they were talking about? Which separates out the things that have already been done and that are gonna be paid for under the old billing system and, and then the ones that are gonna be paid under the new system?
I don't know the, the status of the change order, other than last Friday, I received a draft copy of that change order, which literally had that listing. I mean, it's there. It exists. Okay? So, it shouldn't, should be fairly straightforward. I assume somebody's gonna say, well, we need to finalize the change order, needs to be signed and all that kind of thing. And, but, but the point is, is it does exist. Therefore, DOIT ought to be able to, when they get the bill, they ought to be able to say, check, 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 check. Got all these. They're all done, done, done. Okay? And that's, I think that's crucial. The council should expect administration to identify in each monthly report the number of unfinished deliverables. I mean, achieving perfection is pretty hard. So, and some of the, if you see, take a look at these things, I mean, they're, the list is long in the beginning and shorter at the end, but they're easily a full page of deliverables each month, round approximation. So, what's that? Thirty, forty-five, fifty, whatever the number is. It's a full page. So, the question becomes, how many of those deliverables can the county afford to accept if it's not finished and pay the bill? Because it's fixed. So, if there's, if there's 50 and there's 48 of them, they're reviewed, approved and finished, is it okay to pay the bill? Because it's a fixed amount. No prorating. And if, but if I've only got 30 reviewed and approved, am I gonna not pay? Am I gonna hold payment? That's the only control you've got to enforce, to enforce delivery.
Are you saying that the change order specifies that monthly payment is all or none?
Absolutely. It is, there's a different number every month, but it is fixed. In other words, there's no detailed billing, there's no prorating. Okay? So, we gotta have something.
So, there's a threshold point, has to be a threshold point for yes or no?
I don't know what it is.
Okay. That's a good point. Thank you.
Council should expect the administration's formal response to both the state auditor and the internal auditor regarding the disaster recovery plan.
Hold on just a minute. Councilman Gallagher has a question.
Zig, thank you. I, I've noticed you keep saying the county should, the team should. I was under the impression that Mr. Young is running this and that his head's on the block. Are you telling us that there are monthly deliverables not being delivered yet we pay for them? Or you don't know that because you're not getting a report?
Well, this whole thing is starting effective this month. So, everything prior was line item by line item, deliverable by deliverable.
Okay.
Okay? So, it's now changing. And so, you know, all, all I've been told is we will, we will continue to track detailed deliverables as we have in the past. That's, that's all I've been told.
Okay.
The disaster recovery plan, I, it seems to me like the, the administration, the DOIT, needs to formally respond. You know, and, and that response needs to be, we, we will have a disaster recovery plan by the end of 2019. Or, or we accept our, all the risks associated with not having a disaster recovery plan, we're not gonna do one. Whatever. I, I, okay?
Yes. Zig, are you aware of any other government agency that doesn't have a disaster recovery plan?
I'm sure there are some. But generally, generally, I mean, I mean, well-run organizations have a disaster recovery plan.
Considering the auditor has notated this time after time. Okay. Thanks.
So, extending the solution, the council should request the administration prepare a business case for extending the fiscal components of the N4 solution to the courts and to HHS. A business case. Why can't we or why should we or whatever? You know? Seems to me like the county, if you look, go back to the very beginning of, why in the world did you select an enterprise resource planning system? Why did you select an enterprise-wide system? Why did you want to do that? So, you could have everything fit together and tie together. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what it says. Yet, you're not including two of the largest organizations from a, now, I understand the organizational differences and HHS doesn't, you know, isn't, isn't an, or, excuse me, the courts are not an executive agency and all that kind of discussion. But that's got nothing to do with the computer system and, and using the same computer system and passing information back and forth.
I do take it as a positive indicator that you're even thinking about expanding the scope of what we initially set out to do. That's a good thing. Councilman Gallagher.
Actually, for you, Mr. Chairman, I, I, we've heard this many times before. I would suggest it would come from you to find out, has that been approached with these two departments? And what their thoughts are. It's one thing to talk about them, but, and it's a great idea to do it. Actually, it's a great idea at the beginning to do it. But now that we're, where we're at and suggesting to do it because there's extra money, which, I don't know what that, I've never heard a good definition of extra money. But I, I think we need to hear from these two groups what their objection may be or have they even been approached? We don't even know them.
We'll get with them and, and start a process.
And then secondly, the second point of recommendation on here is, I, I understand that BODD, you know, the Board of Developmental Disabilities, very large organization, is actually going out and looking for a new financial system. One would think that, gee.
Duh.
So, I, I, it seems to me like the council ought to request that the administration prepare a business case for why the N4 system can't be, you know, rolled out to BODD. I mean.
It would be a big help if they're on the same system that we're on.
One would think. So, this, this, the data lake that's planned, I just, I show it, what I'm showing you here is I've just kind of compressed some things from last month's budget analysis. So, again, I don't have the current one, but last month's budget analysis for the project, it, it rolls, it, it rolls all these dollar categories of where we think we're gonna be spending money in the future. And so, what you, what you see in here is that, yes, they're expecting to spend $800,000 on this new data lake solution. Okay? So, yeah, I'm just simply saying, well, maybe, you know, you might want to ask the administration and DOIT to justify whether or not this enterprise solution, you see the parallel here? Should be paid for out of the $25 million. Should it be funded by the $25 million ERP project? So, you, so it's kind of like, if you're not gonna do enterprise-wide for courts, BODD and HHS, you are gonna do it for archival data? Interesting question.
Mr. Chairman.
So, I just think they ought to justify it.
Just to, thank you, through the chair, just to Zig, so, as far as the courts and, and HHS and Board of Development, excuse me, developmental disabilities, so, why, why wouldn't this have been, you know, broached with these organizations way back when? Because here's what's gonna happen. I mean, I mean, just based on history of this project, is it's gonna take another six months to even talk to these organizations and then we're gonna be into a new fiscal year and there's gonna, they're gonna want more money to include because they're gonna have contracts that have run out and everything else. So, why are we in November, almost December of 2018? And we're just like saying now, well, you know, let's talk to these, they should be talking to these extra groups here. I, I, I just don't understand, is that because there's no project manager, maybe? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out rhetorical question.
Well, it, it, it's probably a combination, you know, of all the above. You know, early on, early on, you know, the kinds of comments that I was getting is that, well, we don't know how much of the $25 million we're going to be needing to spend. Okay? So, that was, that was the, the thinking. Early on, it was, we needed a controlled scope. We, you know, we really don't want to expand it because, you know, we, we really don't think we can handle it, you know? So, so, there's, there's a variety of those kinds of things. And, and so, somebody, in the very beginning, two years ago, somebody said, we're doing the executive agencies only. I mean, that, you know, because that was a way of controlling the scope. That was a way of limiting what was being done. Because there was, because the, you know, you, you get a DOIT department which basically says, well, I provide information technology services to the executive agencies. You know? Don't have control over those others. You know, and I'm going, you know, come on. What is, what does enterprise mean? I, you know, but, but that seemed to be some of the thinking and how, how everybody got to where they are. Well, now you know. I mean, now you know what's left. And in fact, there might even be more left if they can't justify the $800,000. Right? That, you know, can certainly pay for that. The other thing, of course, is that you now have, you know, you now have HHS, the courts and BODD that, you know, could provide some supporting funding. Okay? Which is, which would be nice to have. Right? I do know, in terms of conversations with HHS, that they'd be perfectly happy to have a new financial system that happens to be in for. You know, that was, that's not hard. Just ask the director or the chief, I guess, is the right way to say that.
Ms. Brown.
Thank you. So, just so we're clear, you're saying that none of the fiscal and procurement functions of ERP are going to be used by HHS or the courts?
That's correct.
On the $800,000, are you saying that it's currently part of the $25 million and, and should be? Or are you saying it isn't part of the $25 million and should be?
It has been planned. It's always been in there. There's always been an intent by the DOIT to have the $25 million appropriation fund this particular piece. The question that I, I, I suggest needs to be asked is, is it appropriate that it be funded by the $25 million capital budget for an ERP solution? If its intent is archival data, not only for the executive agencies, but also for HHS. We're not being consistent here. Okay? I mean, either you're gonna do all or you're gonna do part. That and the fact that N4's got a tremendous amount of data repository capabilities already as we speak. I mean, so this, you know, and I'm not questioning whether or not there should be a data, an archival system for the county. That's fine. Go forward. Go with it. I have no problem with that at all. Question is what the funding should be.
So, and are you suggesting that N4 could do it and maybe we don't need another contractor?
Well, the, now we get into the technology question. Yes, N4 has document management capabilities. Okay? We've, we've been down this road when we talked about on base X months ago. N4 has them. Is it readily available across the board? No. Will it be in their next release? Probably. Which might take you a year and a half or so down the road. So, we're into this, okay, from an ERP perspective, there's a tremendous amount of capability that's already, that you already have. I'm not, again, I'm not questioning the need for an archival solution. But it's talking about everything. I mean, we're talking about the capability to track emails, tweets, you know, all that stuff. I mean, so it's very comprehensive. What will it do initially? It'll just take stuff from the current systems and move them in there. It'll take stuff from the current document management system and move it in. That's what it'll, that's what it'll do. But then, you may not see that until late in 2019 or even into 2020. It's, it's not easy. It's gonna be complex.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the last item, by the way.
Yes. Any, any other questions? Okay, Ms. Conwell.
To the chair, to Zig, you've stood before us for several months and you've given us these, your perspective on what's being done. In each step, when you lay it out to us month by month or quarterly, are they, because I'm sure someone's listening from the administration, are they fixing these issues as? I'm sure someone's listening from the administration, are they fixing these issues as you bring them for us? Are you having conversation afterward, after you presented to us, that these things are being fixed or they're just compiling on top of one another? Be honest.
Well, the council is my client. I report to the council. I, I present my thoughts, opinions and recommendations to the council. I, I certainly hope that there, there are some folks who are paying attention, listening. I do certainly have opportunities and situations where I will talk to individuals in, on the team individually and my thoughts and recommendations will tend to come out. But I don't get any kind of, necessarily any kind of feedback that says, yeah, it's a great idea, we should do that. I, I don't really get that. Because I, you know, I'm, I'm not their consultant. I, you know, I'm not, I'm not the, the county's consultant. I can, I can make suggestions to the council as I should and hopefully the council will then promulgate some of those.
We also, we also jawbone the administration on behalf of Zig's recommendations. And at, at one point a few months ago, we had the staff run a report where they looked at all of Zig's recommendations to find out which ones the administration did and which ones they didn't do. And we found that it was some yes and some no. It was kind of a mixed bag. But at least, at least some of what Zig has been recommending has been getting through. And, and if, if this had not been the case, I think we would not be in, in as good a place as we are. It would be less positive than what we currently have.
And my follow-up, I'm a little confused of just hearing about HHS because I remember at the initial conversations, we always talked about HHS being included. It was HR, Public Works and HHS. So I'm a little confused. I know we talked about it on ONBase to find out that HHS is not gonna be included.
Where things get a little, a little interesting is we've got to remember that the open enrollment, the HR piece, the personnel piece, is pretty much open to everybody in the county. That's why I'm very specific when I speak about the fiscal piece is the one that has been, is not including courts, BODD or HHS. HHS has its own financial system. Courts have their own. I mean, so, so, and you know, but that's, that's all I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, you know, the whole world and everything, just talking about those two, those, those pieces is the, is the fiscal piece.
Okay. Which means that, break it down for me. So the fiscal piece, you're talking about just the funding?
General ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable, purchasing, projects, grants. I mean, it's, it's all the financial pieces.
So the systems will talk to one another and do all that it's promised to do, just not for the convenience of, for Maggie to see all that fiscal stuff? Is that?
Not sure I understand your question.
Okay. Because she's the officer budget manager and she should see everything from every standpoint. So if you're saying that the fiscal components won't be in, is not included in this 25 million, she won't be able to see all that at a glance?
The data, the, the summary data will of course be fed in so that she's got, you know, all, all, all that. I'm talking about the actual processing that goes on on a day-to-day basis. You know, when you put in journal vouchers in, when you put a journal voucher in and say, change this, this money from this account to this account, that right now, that activity is going on in their own system, not going on, will not go on in INFOR, which is what I'm suggesting would make sense.
Thank you.
Councilman Schron.
I assume then that the courts and HHS would, would also get access to the LMS if they want to do training and education, put content in there, they would, they would also be, we're, we're paying for it once, so it should be universal for, for any of them, the CRM and all those things that we're paying for on one side would be transferable to the other, unless it's a user head fee that we had, have to pay some kind of additional user head fee. I'll ask the same question that I asked Mr. Sangrenetti. You are our eyes and ears on this project and when a position of the XO, this, this second-in-command leaves, an exit interview would be almost mandatory in any organization. Why did you leave? Where are you going? What's the background? What's the information? Did you conduct either a formal or informal sit-down, cup of coffee or anything like that to know what, why this person left? And if it, and if it was, it was, if that took place in a, in a conversation where you said, it'll stay confidential, I don't ask you, I'm not asking you to breach of confidence?
I often spoke with him. He was one of my people that I, that I contact on a weekly basis. So I was aware that, you know, that he, that he had some challenges with regard to his employment and the way things were set up. You know, I didn't know the details. He wouldn't talk about them. I did not think that he was, he did not indicate to me that he was looking, did not indicate to me that he, you know, was, you know, that he was thinking about leaving. Because I talked to him just a few days before. So, and, and I have not contacted him and said, okay, what happened? So that I have not done. So, you know, it's not my, you know, HR should have done that.
Yeah, somebody should have. I mean, that's clearly, an exit interview is, is clearly something.
Maybe they did. I have no idea. I mean, they, they're, they're not required to sit there and tell me what they.
No, no, I just thought of maybe over a cup of coffee. I'm leaving because payroll is one thing, but performance of this project.
He was, he was gone when I was told he was gone.
Okay.
I, I was told on Friday.
Thanks.
He was gone already.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, well, a week from today is Thanksgiving. We would like to express gratitude for, for the, the very fine work that you've done. I'm, I'm confident that our understanding of this process would not be nearly as good nor would the project be in, in doing as well as it's doing if, if it weren't for your involvement. We, I, I think that our, our money on your contract has been very well spent and we, we appreciate the good work. We look forward to continuing to work with you. We have one more briefing set up this year. It's, it's a couple of days after the, the council meeting in December and in the middle of the month. So we look forward to seeing you then and hopefully we'll have some good news on the leadership transition and the weekly reports and some of the other things that we're concerned about and, and hopefully the smooth sailing will, will still be smooth at that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
And I would like to invite all of my colleagues to please join us this coming Monday on November 19th at 1 o'clock for the third quarter financial update. This is the process that, that partially replaces the off-year budget process, which as you know, was suspended this year because of the ERP installation. So this is a very important meeting. I encourage everybody to attend and particularly those who are on the Finance and Budget Committee. Thank you very much. There being nothing further that commands our attention, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.